October meeting of the Johnson City Board of Education to order and thank our great group of people from Mountain View and other places for being here tonight. We always start our meeting with a moment of silence. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Stooks, who has some students who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight we have Gideon and Leila who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Now we will have a performance by some of our first and second grade students under direction of our music teacher, Ms. Kristy Hawley. Our music and art classes have been learning about different cultures all around the world. Students had a lot of fun going on special trips each week. They have learned about different cultures, artists, past and present, dances and instruments from several of these countries. Tonight, our students will be performing two of their favorite songs, their theme song, Hello to All the Children of the World, and Akshav, a folk song from Israel. We hope that you enjoy the performance. Hey. How are you? That's it, mhm. Good. Nice play. Wow, wow. Unbelievable. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Stooks.
Okay. I'd hate for anyone to miss what I have to say, but I will keep this party going. We are so thankful for our teachers and the extra hard work they put into helping our students prepare for this performance tonight. Don't forget to look at the artwork in the back. Our students have worked incredibly hard on this display showcasing many of the artists that they've learned about along the way on their special trips. A special thanks to parents, families, teachers and staff that came out tonight. So what's happening at Mountain View? Well, this past summer, we had about 85 regular attendees in our summer school, which we called Camp Mountain View, and that was under the direction and leadership of our assistant principal, Dr. Dotson. There she is. In August, we welcomed fifth grade students back to elementary school. We have four fifth grade homerooms. We are also partnering with Nice Longer and working with Project On Track. We started Project On Track at Mountain View the first week of September, and it will run through the spring. It is a high dosage, low ratio tutoring program for students in first through third grades. Our Project On Track tutor, Shalon Tester, meets with two different groups of students two times a week after school, and she's currently serving about 24 students in reading instruction. And Dr. Dotson serves as our site coordinator. We continue to work towards excellence at Mountain View by working to provide the best instructional opportunities in a safe, clean and loving environment for our students. Our teachers meet and plan weekly with their grade level teams, team members and instructional coaches. We continue to look for ways to provide enhanced learning experiences throughout our school. Our goals for this year center around improvement, improving academic achievement in ELA and math, increasing quality early childhood experiences by continuing the service, a host school for voluntary pre-K programs, improving daily school attendance and continuing to stress the importance of school culture, climate and safety for all faculty, staff and students. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of Johnson City Schools and to lead Mountain View. I appreciate all the ways that you support our teachers, staff, students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stooks. Are there any questions for Dr. Stooks?
I'd just like to say you win the prize for class participation.
That was a big.
We tried to motivate.
Fabulous.
Wonderful group.
Thank you. Thank you. They did a great job.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is recognitions.
Thank you and good evening. First of all, we want to recognize some students. We want to recognize several students for their outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT qualifying exam. Four Science Hill High School students earned letters of commendation, which represents scores in the top three to four percent of all scores among test takers. The following students earned letters of commendation. Britton Dugan, Elian Holt, Amper and Alyssa Street. If you guys were here, if you could come up, please. Seven Science Hill High School students were named national merit semifinalists. Their scores were in the top one percent of all scores, and they now advance to compete for approximately 7,250 scholarships worth approximately $28 million. With the following students, please come up when your name is called. Asham Cordemiri, Kya Wynn Lakey, Rachel Leerson, Jacob Nah, Lea O'Neil, Logan Smith, Sina Yang. If you guys could come up, please. Next, we'd like to recognize Allison Berry from Town Acres Elementary. Allison was recently selected to participate on the Social Studies Educator Advisory Team for the Tennessee State Board of Education. Allison was one of seven educators selected to work on social studies standards, grades K-5. We congratulate you and thank you for your participation. If you would come up, please. Next, we want to recognize Dr. Greg Wallace, Supervisor of Safety and Mental Health. Dr. Wallace was recently named a finalist for Tennessee Supervisor of the Year, one of nine supervisors statewide. Congratulations, Dr. Wallace, for the work he has done for the staff and students of Johnson City Schools. If you could come up, please. Now for some school awards. We have four elementary schools that recently earned reward school status from the Tennessee Department of Education. Reward school status recognizes schools that demonstrate high levels of performance and/or improvement in performance by meeting objectives across performance indicators and across student groups. Principals, please come up when your name is, or your school is called. Fairmont Elementary, Lake Ridge Elementary, Southside Elementary, Town Acres Elementary. If you guys come up. Yeah, those are the ones that were out of order. We have six schools that recently earned a Level V distinction for annual growth. Those schools are Fairmont Elementary, Lake Ridge Elementary, Indian Trail Middle School, Liberty Bay Middle School, Johnson City Virtual Academy and Science Hill High School. If you guys could come up, please. It's next. And finally, we want to recognize our very own Johnson City Schools for earning a Level V distinction for annual growth for 2122. Johnson City is one of only 23 districts across the state turned a Level V distinction for both 2020, 21 and 2122. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett, and congratulations to everyone that was recognized tonight. We've got a lot of great things going on in our school. I know you all want to stay for the whole meeting, but it won't hurt our feelings if you don't. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? We have no one signed up for correspondence, delegations and communications, so that brings us to reports from our superintendent and staff.
Thank you. Our first report today is the building projects update. Mr. Brian Ross, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Sorry I missed last month. I had some other engagements, but I'm happy to be back. First off, I'm happy to report that Woodland Elementary has achieved substantial completion, so that's a major milestone. So the contractor is now on the clock, he's got a finite date to wrap up everything, and that's on a punch list that we gave to him. And we did grant them 60 days because of some circumstances that they were facing. So we, normally that's 30, but we granted 60. So hopefully by mid-November, they will be done and gone. Lake Ridge Elementary keeps marching on. They have done a lot of great work on the addition and on the site work. If you've been out there, they finished the sidewalk going into the. And that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Is it likely that the materials will arrive on time for the Town Acres?
For Town Acres? The unfortunate thing that is happening lately in industry is you get an estimated ship date, and you find out a couple of weeks before you're supposed to get it that there's been another delay. So it's kind of hard to be confident in those dates, but we do talk regularly to see if there have been any changes or updates. That's the least we can do, I think, is to see, to check, and see if we know of any complications, but I don't know of any at this point.
Any other questions? Thank you for your update. Thanks for being here. Next report is the financial report, ending August 31, 2022. Leah Valley.
Revenues for the month of August totaled $6,988,000. Local option sales tax collections received in August were approximately $1,788,000. For the year through August, total revenues were $10,062,000, that's 7.9% above the previous year. Expenditures for the month of August totaled $7,057,000, and for the year, total expenditures were $9,791,000, and that would be 4% above the previous year. Fund balance at the end of August was $17,587,000. We will see fund balance decline over the next few months, however, our cash balance is quite a bit better off than it has been in previous years at this point. As of today, the bank account had a balance of just under $12 million, so I don't anticipate the cash flow issues we normally have in the fall. Are there any questions?
I was pleasantly surprised to see that sales tax continues to be strong. I think we're all expecting that to stop eventually. Have you seen any trends anywhere else that would suggest that we might see a decline in the growth?
I've just seen articles out there about indicators are out there nationally, globally. I was reading one today about the value of the dollar going up, and that affects imports, exports, and starting to see stuff decline. There's anticipation of recession, just haven't seen it yet start or at least hit in our area.
Right, I think we've seen other places, but I'm just amazed that we're still, what, 16% above what last year was, and last year was an amazing year for sales tax in this area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Valley?
There, you know, we're going to see an increase in, to the health insurance in January. When do you think might be a good time to look at that with the board? Maybe November?
We could do that, yep. I can run some estimates for you.
Okay.
And do we know how much the health insurance is going up?
Overall, it's a 6.1% increase, but it's different depending on your coverage. Employee plus spouse saw the largest increase. The state really did quite a considerable increase on that, where the employee, employee plus children and family didn't see that, see that increase.
At our November meeting, you'll give us some ideas how we might offset that increase?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
This is an action item?
Motion to accept the financial report.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Next report is from Leah Valley as well. Update on sales tax, PEP.
Deposits for August consisted of $275,000 for the city and $175,000 for the schools. In August, the monthly 2010 Series interest bond payment was transferred from the account twice in error. The overpayment was approximately $68,000. It once was found in September, should have been transferred back into the account. At the end of the month, the account had a balance of roughly $6,880,000. The correct balance should have been $6,948,000. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Report on School System School Compliance, 2022. It's an action item. Tammy Pierce is here, if you have any questions. That is essentially a report that we do every year that says that we are or we are not in compliance with all state and federal laws and State Board of Education rules. We are reporting that we are in compliance with all State Board of Education rules, state laws, federal laws. Are there any questions?
Any questions about that? That is an action item.
How do we accept that report for compliance?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Next item is Report on School System School Compliance, 2022. It's an action item. Tammy Pierce is here, if you have any questions. That is essentially a report that we do every year that says that we are or we are not in compliance with all state and federal laws and State Board of Education rules. We are reporting that we are in compliance with all State Board of Education rules, state laws, federal laws. Are there any questions?
Any questions about that? That is an action item.
How do we accept that report for compliance?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you, Dr. Burnett. That brings us to unfinished business, and on our unfinished business, we have the Science Hill Band overnight field trip request to Ireland. And I believe we have some folks here ready to tell us more about that.
We have Dr. Carson Vermillion and Booster Club President Jen Fowler.
And our booster board.
And a booster board. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Well, we're here to speak about a trip that we have been accepted to the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Dublin, Ireland, in March 2024, and we were here back in June, whether or not we could apply for the trip, and we did apply, and we were accepted. So we're here to seek approval to go forward with the trip.
Could you tell us a little bit more? I know one of the concerns we had when we were last here was that we made sure that all students were able to, all band students were able to go on this trip if they chose to. Could you tell us a little bit more about the fundraising?
Specifically, we haven't had specific meetings concerning specific fundraising. The first thing that if we were accepted that we would do, we would, you know, put together a committee in terms of fundraising to explore different type of fundraisers that we could use that could, with the trip being about $3,200 to $3,400, the fundraisers that we try to have to do are things that are not like a nickel and dime things and things that we'd like to build, have the students make a substantial amount of money. We have fundraisers that are going on yearly that we have used for trips in the past, and they're happening now. And so already fundraisers that we normally have going on for whatever trip is happening is now. So the big thing would be to develop a committee and identify specific fundraisers that we could use that we could think that would be more substantial than smaller fundraisers.
So as the band booster president, we've done some research and talked about who would be a good representative from the band culture, representing all different areas, income levels, all of that, so that we do get a good feel of how each group within the band feels comfortable raising the money, because that becomes an issue too. You know, one of the fundraisers that we have, some people don't do as well in their neighborhoods as, say, other people do. So we're going to take into account every single area, and we've already started looking into it. We just, we had the beginning started because there wasn't a point in spending a lot of time doing it if you guys were going to say no, if that makes sense, because it's very time consuming, so, yeah.
Speaking to my friend.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah. So yes, we've started the process. We know that there's a lot to ask families to come up with. We know some families can easily, sorry, pull it out of their pockets, and we know some families cannot. We've spoken to large groups in the community who could help with funding of this trip, and they're quite interested, they're quite excited about a local group representing us in another country. It's a big deal. It's really exciting for our families and our students, and it should be exciting for our community that we were chosen over every other band to represent, you know, our little tiny town in our community, you know, over in Dublin Island. So, yeah, so we're taking this very seriously, and we've taken a lot of that into account, and we're ready to move forward as soon as we either get the go-ahead or we won't move forward if we don't, so.
And of course, the fundraisers that we do choose will be in compliance of the SSO's organization, so we're very aware of that, and we've been, the way we've been running the boosters probably since about 2015, when the whole SSO, we had a meeting here in this board, in the boardroom, concerning what we can and can't do with fundraising, and so we've continued to make sure that we are in compliance with that.
And Dr. Burnett and Ms. Valley, you've talked this through, and you're comfortable that we're all in compliance?
Yes.
I just, so roughly, your goal is to raise about a half a million dollars?
Obviously, depending upon how many students that we have, yes. I mean, ultimately, if every student goes, it's like 3,200, not every student goes. I mean, we're looking somewhere between, depending on the size of the band, the number we're looking at is about 100 students, and so that's about what we normally travel in previous years, and so it's been a little over about 70, 75%. And so, you know, that's, but obviously not everyone's going to raise all of it on just, you know, fundraisers and stuff like that, but you know, substantial amount of money, yes.
So yes, we know, we recognize that it's $480,000 if every single student does want to go, but we're not asking one individual to pay the $480,000. We're asking each student to work towards raising the 3,200 per student with our help and support the whole way through, and then we're looking for ways to support those students who cannot come up with that, and that's fine. That's a lofty goal, I know, but I think it's a worthwhile cause and a worthwhile goal, so.
And have you looked locally? I mean, considering where we live and successful fundraisers, have you guys, I mean, maybe the best fundraiser that I've heard of locally was when the Dublin Bennett Band did the gala at Metaview, but that was still, I mean, it's impressive, but still 150,000, I think, was what they brought in, so that is a lofty goal. I just say that you cannot meet it, but when it's a half a million dollars, that's a lot.
And we're assuming, that's assuming that nobody can pay, you know, we're assuming, and we know for well that there are students in the band that are happy to not participate in the fundraisers and would prefer to just pay for it for themselves, and financially their families can, and that's completely fine. So we know that that's a number if nobody paid for any of it themselves, if that makes sense. That's the total amount that we would have to come up with if nothing else.
If previous trips, you know, we say the same type of ratio, students somewhere around earn just under about half of the trip with the fundraiser that we provide them. And so our trips have gone anywhere, you know, we normally do a trip every two years, somewhere between 1,600, $1,800, and the students of sales that would go would raise anywhere between 800 to $1,000 on their own, and then they would make payments throughout the course of the 18 months or 16 months, whatever we have, that we build into. So when we work with the tour company, they have the option that they can pay X amount of monthly payments for 16, 17, 18 months, whatever it is in terms of the timeline. And so some people do that, and then they make significant payments at tax time, or they make payments at other times during the year, and so it's kind of an ebb and flow about what the money that goes in from different, you know, aspects of, some's paying cash money, some's paying with the fundraising, but so generally, it's been just under, the average, probably just under half.
But this is, would you say probably twice the cost of any trip you've taken?
It is, yes, yes, close, yes. Yeah.
And do you have the support of your band parents and your band boosters that this is the trip that you all want to take?
We do, we do. We've spoken about it, we've had, you know, we've had discussions, we've tried to talk to a good representation of the band community, and I get lots of emails all the time, and people are really, really very supportive. And those people who are not going to go, weren't going to go, whether we were going to Chicago, Disney, you know, they, you know, some families don't want to separate, or some families have said, well, I'm not going to send my kid because if my younger child can't go, I don't think it's fair, my older child gets opportunity, my younger doesn't. So there's lots of reasons other than just like a natural reason why some band members won't go. There, but we feel like everybody we've spoken to is very excited about it, and one of the things that we've heard is that some of our band students are not on a university track, and so if they're not on a university track, they wouldn't have the opportunity to do a student exchange, maybe when they are in school, or even if they are on a university track, the student exchange is six months, and it's way more expensive than this. So this is giving them an opportunity to experience another culture that maybe they will never have another opportunity to do. And that's just an assumption the families are making, but there, so there are a number of families that were quite excited about the opportunity that presents, so.
What, does that company that you're using, is travel insurance included?
Yes.
And is that both medical and, you know, loss of luggage?
Travel, yes.
So that's for disasters, but the, so that cost includes travel insurance?
Yes.
And then?
And there is optional travel insurance that the participants can purchase.
Like above and beyond that or something?
Yes.
And how about chaperones, the ratio, if you think you're taking 100 students, and the number, and then both male and females, then you would have?
Well, according, what we've normally tried to travel with is 10 students per, or one chaperone per 10 students, and I think with the new field trip guidelines, it's two per 25, is so, I mean, with, that's only eight chaperones for 100 students, and we would have more than that anyway.
We always travel, the least amount we travel with is one to 12, even if we're going to Elizabethan High School for a football game. We just, we just prefer to know that we have enough chaperones to cover any uncertainty or situations that occur. It's just wise to be safe, because you never know when somebody's going to get sick, you never know when somebody's going to need a little bit of sugar, you never know when somebody's a little dehydrated and needs to be pulled off the field. And so we need, we like to make sure we're covered in all scenarios, and that's just something that we do as a group, so.
So one of my concerns when you guys were here last time was that some of the lower-income kids would not be able to afford this, and I was hoping to hear, these are the things we have in place to make sure that those kids could go. And I know you mentioned that you've been thinking about some different kinds of fundraisers to help out with that. What are those, what are some of those very specific examples?
Well, what's happening right now, students, it's, they have a free fundraiser, and so where all the profits that they raise, they can use it for the trip, and so that's outside, it's not associated with the school system or the band or anything like that, that's an opportunity that they are given. The things that we would have to do is, in being in compliance with the SSO, is any type of large group fundraiser we have to do, we have to share. And so that's why we're looking for some more significant types of fundraisers where that the students can share more monies.
When you say share, you're talking share among all the students or share?
So if there are 100 students that go on the field trip, and those 100 students participate in a fundraiser, they have to share the fundraiser equally.
But what if they don't participate in the fundraiser?
If they're not, they can still.
They're going to self-fund it.
It's still, they don't have to participate with the fundraiser, it would still go toward that group, and so yes, it would be.
So their $3,400 just goes in the pie?
So no, no, no. No, no, so they, so if we do a fundraiser where we... And so where all the profits that, that they raise, they, they can use it for the trip. Um, and so that's outside. It's not associated with the school system or the band or anything like that. That's an opportunity that they are given. Um, the things that we would have to do is, in, in being a compliance with the SSO is any type of large group fundraiser we have to do, we have to share. And so that's why we're looking for some, some more significant types of fundraisers where that the students can share more monies.
When you say share, you're talking share among all the students or share?
So if there are one hundred students that go on, on the field trip and those one hundred students participate in, in a fundraiser, they have to share the fundraiser equally.
But what if they don't participate in the fundraiser?
If they're not, they, they can still.
They're going to self-fund it?
It's still, they don't have to participate with the fundraiser. It would still go toward that group. And so, yes.
So their thirty-four hundred dollars just goes in the pie?
So, no, no, no.
No.
So they, so if we, if we do a fundraiser where we raise a hundred thousand dollars, that a hundred thousand dollars would go. Equally to all a hundred students going on the trip, whether or not they participated in the fundraiser or not.
And that's, that's part of the SSO guidelines.
Yeah, that's part of it.
And RAS guidelines, et cetera.
So.
So you haven't thought of any?
Well, we can't actually move ahead with any of them until we're accepted, because there's a bunch of stuff that we have to do. So like, one of the ones.
The one we already had in line right now is our, is our fruit fundraiser, which is we schedule every year. The band's been selling fruit for. As long as there's been a band, not really, but, um, and so that was already in place. And so that was a fundraiser that we went to first. And then we would start to develop more on top of that if we move forward.
So that is one that you can earn up to twelve hundred dollars if you sell with two family members. It's, it's a whole, it's a whole bunch of information. Anyway. Um, um, there's been a lot of suggested ones, candy sales, because they do really well. Um, big auctions has been, have been looked into. I know at Little Tiny Town Acres. Um, the last time I participated in an auction and helped do that, um, we raised sixty, sixty thousand dollars. And that was at Town Acres, which is a tiny school. Um, not to be mean, Dr. Simmons, it's a fantastic tiny school. Sorry. Um, uh, um, uh, there's one that I, it's very hard to explain. I'm getting more information on it right now. I've been speaking to the gentleman. Where you have a community, um, that you put through, that each of the kids brings in a list of twenty names. It goes on this site and we have this live auction that goes on, uh, you know, it's, it's an internet live auction. Um, and bands, um, in tiny towns and hours have raised seventy-five thousand dollars doing it this way. Because you're reaching not just our local community, but you're reaching, like my parents who live in Australia. Can donate money to it because it's a live auction that can go worldwide. You know, I would contact friends and family and lots of different places all over the world and they can participate in that live auction, if that makes sense. So we have looked into lots of different, be it tiny things, that represent communities that want something that they can sell for a dollar. Because that's what they feel more comfortable selling in their community, to large scale, like. Um, looking at, you know, the whole world as our community and trying to reach as many people to bring our fundraiser to. So that, those are the things that we're looking at right now. But a lot of those we can't move forward with until, until we get a.
Because we haven't made any announcements. We haven't done any type of publicity. We have not really moved forward.
But at least you have an idea of some things that you can do.
We know what we need, the scope that we need to go to. And that's what we're looking for. And like I said, it's a larger scope. And this is something that, you know, we're working on. It's a fifteen, sixteen month process. And so this is March twenty twenty-four. Uh, and so, you know, that's fifteen months, sixteen months away. So it's something that we, you know, we're able to work on over time. But, um, you know, we just haven't, you know, stepped off yet.
Okay. And if you raise enough money to cover the entire trip in these big scale things. Everybody's good to go. You'll have a balance of money and then everybody gets like a little piece of an allowance or something.
No balance, no balance. We can't make money.
It's all taking, I mean, no, no, no. Everything goes back into the trip. That's what my point is.
Yes.
But we can't lose more than the trip cost.
Yes.
That's part of our SSO as well. It's part of our nonprofit. We cannot earn more than.
Oh, if you do, then I'm going to hire you guys for fundraising. If you do that, well.
And then last question for me, this price includes hotels and all of that as well?
It will include hotels, transportation, ground transportation, not all of the meals. Sometimes it may, you know, all the breakfasts will, will be included. And I think all the dinners will be included. Sometimes they'll have lunch on their own. And sometimes depending on the money situation, we can give them a, they will get a ten or fifteen dollar per game or whatever the, you know, the currency rate is. Uh, depending on what, you know, what we, what we build into the trip. And so.
And that is covered in, in the cost of the trip.
Yes.
Okay.
So like while we were at Disney, um, we know that teenagers are not very smart with budgeting their money. And so we know that they take their money to spend during the trip. And then you have three days of the trip left and you have two dollars to your name and you have to buy three lunches. So we know that. So the tour company is really fantastic about saying, oh, we already rolled in ten dollars. For each of these lunches or fifteen dollars and literally gives each child fifteen dollars on the third, fourth and fifth day. Or whatever it is on the last three days of the trip, so that they have money for meals. Because we know how teenage ratings work, because we spend a lot of time with them and they're really special sometimes. So. And we love them dearly. But, but so, so yes, that's definitely taken into account and is part of the overall cost. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, I'll, I have thought about a lot of this, laying in bed at night. So I, I do want to get a few points across. Some are questions, some are concerns. Uh, but first, I do want to say how much I enjoy the band. And the performance. And obviously to pull this off, like you do, Dr. Vermillion. You are professional and organized and obviously have a very good team of people surrounding you. And I've very much enjoyed the collaboration with Cheer and Dance and other sports teams and. And how you've even supported, um, the other high fiving the, some of the football coaches as you pass. I appreciate that. Um, so I do, um, it, it just looks so collegiate every Friday to go and our nice facilities in the bands. And it, it is, I love to go and I love halftime show. Um, so I appreciate all the success that you brought to Science Hill and to our community and we are very proud of you. So thank you. Um, all of my concerns, so I'm saying all that to say I love the band. I love Jen Fowler and all you guys. Um, so my favorite neighbors are band neighbors and the only people that has been able to. Sit with me for all those years in the stadium is a set of band parents. That I've watched their third child go. That's the only people that remain around me are the Roberts. But, um, so everything I say is not about the band. It's just about my concern. About travel internationally, um, in the climate and culture that we're in right now. Um, so I do want to say that. It's, I wish you would have come with a trip to Orlando or Chicago or, you know, Sacramento or something. Um, I, I think I echo everyone's comments to say that, that I do want all students to go and I, I believe you do too. I, I believe that is what you want. And I agree with what you've said, whether it was Pigeon Forge or across the world. There would be some kids for different reasons not elect to go. So I understand that. And I do want to be sure nothing becomes exclusive to any student. Um, but the, the international travel, uh, concerns me, uh, for a lot of reasons. One, as you just mentioned about the teenagers, like the passports, I mean, they lose shoes, who, they, they could lose passport. And then what are we going to do? We're in Ireland. Don't have a passport to come home.
We, we wouldn't leave him with passports.
Anyway, that's, that could happen. They're going to lose, somebody's going to lose something. I'll lose stuff on vacation. But like, what do we do? This isn't, oh, we're in Orlando and we're just going to get on the bus to come home. I mean, there's passports.
I mean, when we were in Orlando, we took their Park Harper passes.
Yeah.
So they would not lose them. So I, we understand, we understand.
That's what chaperones do. Chaperones carry big backpacks around and put everything in there. And you don't get that back until, like, we don't even do, yeah, with Park Harper passes. We, I mean, we don't even do that.
They're, yeah. That, well, you, you were smart. I'm gonna, I still think that this story still disturbs me, so I don't, you know. But I can't ignore, um, just what happens in the U.S. at the Dallas Maverick game. That still bothers me. A fifteen-year-old goes to the bathroom, I think a fifteen-year-old could go to the bathroom, and she never returns. She's with her dad. She gets no help in the U.S. at that venue. You know, he, you know, the dad's missing, missing. They blow it off. The police, you know, oh, she's got to be missing twenty-four hours. So I just. I'm saying those are real events. That girl thankfully was found alive ten days later, but a victim of sex trafficking in a hotel. So that was in Dallas. You know, I'm just, I don't know what the police is like in, in Ireland, although it, you have chosen a. Safe country, I think, overall to, to go to. But, um, just because they're fifteen and doesn't mean they can't get lost or have other issues. I think you are trying to address the equity for everybody to go. So I think I definitely appreciate that. And I know, just as I know you as people, I know that's what you want to do. The other thing I would, um, say besides passports and requirements is we don't know what twenty twenty-four looks like. So if travel requirements would go against anything that the board does not require for school admissions, such as vaccines or whatever. Then we would not, I would definitely not be in favor to add any requirement like that, that is not a school requirement. And it could. I don't know what twenty twenty-four is going to hold. Um, the other big issue is band is coed. I mean, that's its own, you know, its own issue. So I hope that you would have enough male and female, um, adult chaperones. Um, the other thing, when you said sometimes they'll be on their own, just as a reminder, the drinking age in Ireland is eighteen. So, and you know, um, with this type of trip, the chaperones are twenty-four seven. There's no off-duty chaperones. Um, you know, I, I can see, I can't imagine that a hundred kids, somebody's not going to post something on social media while you're gone. And just to be careful about all those things, because kids want to show that they did something on their trips. Um, so, you know, you've got different issues with that. If kids are on their own or they, they can buy a beer if they're eighteen. You know, I'm not saying they will, but we know kids, as you said, don't make the best decisions. Where if a parent has a child, they, you know, they can't okay, you know, all of it twenty-four seven would have to be board policy.
I, I, not to interrupt you, but I'm sorry, but on their own, I'm not sure where that came from.
Okay. And they said they would eat on their own.
As in, their food on their own. They are given, they, they provide lunch on their own. They, yeah, so there's no, I mean. We, we frown upon them doing anything by themselves.
On their own. And I, I get that. Those are, I just have a lot of concerns. I wish you would have come with a trip to Orlando or Chicago or California. Because I love the band, but I do, I have a lot of safety concerns in this climate. You know, two thousand nineteen, I might have stepped back, but anyway.
Mr. Hager.
I'll make a motion that we grant the band permission to pursue the trip to Ireland. With the understanding any student who wants to go can make the trip.
There's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I do have a question. Can this be a non-sanctioned school trip? I read the field trip policy. So what would that look like?
I think it can't because they, they are going to be.
Representing the school.
They're going to represent school and there are some dates that, uh, students will have to miss, miss school to go.
Possibly two, yes.
And, and do you clarify, just to address two, two of the things? Um, so we have taken a lot of what you've said into account. Um, because our children will be going on that trip and we want them to be safe. You know, both of our kids will be going on that trip. And we want them to be as safe as possible. So. Um, other than in their rooms, when there's the group of them and they have a room check at night. And then a little bit later and then in the morning as well, they're never by themselves. They are with their chaperones when we're in cities like that. Like they all move together. They all eat together. They, so, so they're not by themselves ever. Um, and there's constant counting. It's like a preschool trip, you know, one, two, three, four, I've got Bob. Where's Bob? No, Bob, what are you doing? Like, Bob's got to be right here. So, so there's constant counting, constant, um, uh. Monitoring of all of their activities. Um, the only time, and, and then generally what the tour company does, talking about boys and girls. Is boys are on one floor of hotel and girls are on another floor. And if, they're not allowed to go between. And they have, they are monitored, the teachers' rooms or, or the counselor's rooms and all that sort of stuff. Uh, and chaperones' rooms and everything are all like, so that you can hear. So, so we have a lot of monitoring going on during the trip. I, I know, you know, it can't always be a hundred percent. There is a lot of monitoring going on during the trip. Um, you also have kind of a buddy system. You don't go anywhere. You have your group that you've chosen to be with and you are stuck with that group. Like those are your buddies and you, if you go to the bathroom, you don't go by yourself to the bathroom. We don't even do that at Disney when, when, like Disney's probably one of the safest places in the world. Because there's so many things being monitored in Disney. So we don't go to the bathroom. We go to the bathroom as a group with our group. And that we're traveling with. So, um, so we do have a lot of that already built in. Obviously you can't be a hundred percent perfect all the time, but if it just alleviates, alleviates you a little bit, we do. We have considered all of that. It were, you know, for us, we make sure that our children are safe. And that's the good part of the band boosters being parents is that we want to make sure that our own children are safe. And our children's friends are as safe as possible. Um, so a lot of that is built in. If that alleviates any of the, the anxiety. I know it's not going to, but you know, it, it just, I just want to share that with everybody. So.
That's true. Yes, I just, and I'm glad you said that because I just want to make sure the folks on the board and those out there, the listeners know that. Dr. V, how long have you been a band director? Couple of years? Exactly. How many trips have you planned out of town? Yeah. So I think we, we just need to know that he knows what he's doing. My concern was about.
I was part of a team that took the University of Southern Mississippi Band to Scotland in two thousand and five.
A college?
It was a college band, yes. Different animal.
And, and if I can continue, right, because, because we really want to move on and get this meeting over with, don't we? So, but I just want people to know that you know what you're doing. And then I think that, that my biggest concern was that everybody gets to go. Everybody. And, and I'm glad you shared all of those things, being transparent, so that folks know what you're actually doing. Because I'm not going to go on this trip unless you need me to. But, but I'm not going to go. But I think it's good to know what you folks are doing to make sure that our kids are safe and that they're all going to come back home at night, which is what we're looking for. So. Just one.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Why don't we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Herb Greenley?
Yes.
Dr. Ginger Carter?
No.
Ms. Michelle Tree?
Yes.
Ms. Beth Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kathy Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas Hager?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, I don't think I want to chaperone, but if you need someone to carry luggage. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate that. Uh, that brings us to our consent agenda. Are there items we wish to pull?
Yes, I have some questions on overnight field trip.
Okay, so seven I, oh, the seven E?
I think it's E.
Seven E, I have a question on that too. I wanted to pull that also. Okay. Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve all the consent agenda, agenda other than seven E?
I'm moved to approve all except seventy.
Second, Mr. Greenley. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, you can go first. What you wanted to pull and.
Um, the questions I had were about the orchestra trip. It was about funding. Um, the, the one that eighty-eight students are going to, they estimated the cost at seven fifty per student. And then there was one for the Beta Club, although I think Dr. Burnett did find some information out, eight hundred and twenty-six per student. And when we get in amounts like that, I really do want to know, um, you know, how, is any student excluded because of the price?
Yeah, my question was the same on the, on the Beta Club. Orchestra, I assume, has always worked. But, but good question and, and I would like to hear a little bit more. I think the Washington DC trip is an amazing trip. I just want to make sure that it, that we're not excluding any students.
So the, the orchestra trip, are you all, are you asking about it as well? That's one of the seven hundred and fifty.
Yes, it said eighty-eight students are going and the estimated cost was seven fifty. And just because of the cost per student, I just want to be sure kids that want to go, like, do they have fundraising opportunities?
They do. I talked with Ms. Lambert today on this issue. They do have some fundraising opportunities. Uh, that are coming up. One in particular, doing an online auction. And the, their guild raises that money. So it's kind of similar to what Dr. Vermillion was talking about. Whatever money is raised is equally dispersed to all the students. And then at the end of that fundraising, any student that wants to go, that can, that does not have enough funds. So all that money gets equally dispersed to lower the cost for the student. Any student that could not make up that cost. Can apply for a scholarship through the Orchestra Guild. That paperwork's available on their website if you ever have anybody ask you about that. On the Orchestra Guild website and they offer those scholarships to pay for students who, if they do, if they do not raise enough money as an Orchestra Guild. Those students can apply for a scholarship and, um, to cover the rest of the cost.
And the other one was Beta Club. Questions? Same, they, when I asked about it, uh, Dr. Jacobs, you, did you find anything else about it? One of the things they talked about was there are scholarships available. Paid for through the agency that they're using, uh, and fundraising is also happening. For anyone who can't pay or struggles to go. So they do have it in place to, to help.
So, but in general, each student is going to be asked to, to pay eight hundred and twenty-six dollars? Please, sorry, please. I've been, last month I was not here because I had COVID and I couldn't hear. Please, sorry, please, I've been, last month I was not here because I had COVID and I couldn't hear what was going on when you all talked in the back.
My apologies, so this is my first year with Beta Club, so I'm learning. I met with Kelsey Walker today, who did Beta Club last year at Liberty Bell. And we talked about it and it sounds like from their plan, they've been doing this for years. Every student will have an opportunity to have funds provided if they can't afford it. I think they have that covered and that's just a process they've had in place. I wish I could tell you more, but I'm I'm not the expert on Beta Club.
And I think that that's my only, I think, yes, it's Washington DC trips and are fantastic. But the the amount did seem a little high that I would be afraid someone would be excluded. So do you, and you may not be able to answer this, but but do you think every child that would want to go would be able to go?
I think so, I can't imagine that we would leave a student behind because there's not funding for that child. And if it's a school event, I mean, we're going to find a way, fundraising, you know, we'll do, reach out as much as we can to make sure every child has an opportunity. And I think that's that's something that the Beta Club has been doing already. But I'll make sure that that, and Holly is, she feels the same way I do, that we take care of our kids that want to go.
And I'm I'm going to vote to approve this, but I would like kind of an update on on exactly, you know, it it would put a parent in a bad situation, even if they could afford the 826, but that might not be what they had planned for the $826. So I want to make sure that there that there's some ways to offset that cost.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make a note and we'll be sure to get you that information.
Any other discussion on this? You want to make a motion to?
Yes, I will move to approve the overnight field trip request and also look forward to some follow up from Dr. Jacobs and Flor.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes? Yes? Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent for action.
Thank you, the first recommendation is memorandum of understanding, November 14, 2022. And it'll run through November 13, 2025. It's in your packet and also sent out information on Friday with, they included a list of what changes actually were recommended and put in place in this memorandum.
Motion to approve the memorandum.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? All right, hearing none, let's let's do a roll call vote on this, it's an important enough item.
Mr. Herb Greenley?
Yes.
Dr. Ginger Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Treese?
Yes.
Ms. Beth Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kathy Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas Hager?
Yes.
All right, that that passes, we have a memorandum of understanding.
Second recommendation is for policies for first reading for our October board meeting today, which is 1.600.
You don't have to do that. We've decided that we don't have to.
They're listed in.
They're listed in our packet. Yeah, sure.
I just want a clarification on page nine, board member development opportunities. The change is toward the bottom of the page. NSBA is not capitalized anymore. So I'm assuming that since TSBA is no longer a part of NSBA that we're just saying.
If there are, if there are national organizations, school board organizations, yes, you're right. TSBA, that's a good point and and a good thing to remind us all that TSBA has has pulled out of NSBA and now a lot of organizations have. There is a regional or there is a new COSPA, is that, yes. So that, we didn't want to not have national organizations included, but it is not NS, the NSBA. All right, we don't have a motion yet, right? Is there a motion to approve these policies?
I'll move that we approve the policies.
I'll second.
Any just, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That brings us to follow up from this meeting. I have a feeling the band will take care of their own follow up. Is there anything that we need to communicate with our stakeholders?
I believe, I mean, we've now finally approved the, in the consent agenda, the field trip request and the private vehicle use. And I think Dr. Barnett's already conveyed to be sure to.
Those, the, all the principals have those, destroy the old forms and then produce those.
Perfect.
So they already have those. The other thing that'll be communicated, the SR 2.0, SR 3.0, that application is, it will go on the website for the community to be able to see that. And that's the budget, public plan. So that will go on, not the application, but the public plan will go on our website. It's ready, it's already on there, okay.
So the field trip will be communicated through the newsletter?
So we've already sent it to principals and Colin and I talked about it today, it felt like we put it in the newsletter and it goes out to all staff. So then they would know this is the process for field trips.
And although we did not make it policy, but that that chaperone packet that you had emailed to the board, we'll communicate that about those permission. Perfect, permission slips. Just so the principals would convey that too about when a parent gives permission for their child to ride with who that is, that that's, that's who they ride with.
All right. That brings us to information items, everyone is welcome to stay, but our hardworking staff is also welcome to to leave.